This is a special meeting of the planning board for the Town of East Fishkill. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming meeting dates are December 20th, 2022, and January 17th, 2022. We have minutes from the meeting of October 11th, 2022. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Don.
Don Pappy, present.
Craig Arkoff.
Laurie G.
John Eichman.
Ed Miyoshi.
Richard Campbell.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Okay, our agenda tonight includes Hudson Valley Logistics Center. We had adjourned a public hearing a couple of times, and so I'll accept a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, please go ahead, Mr. O'Rourke.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Richard O'Rourke, I'm with the law firm of Keenan Bean. We represent the applicant for tonight's continuance of the public hearing. Here tonight with us is John Decole and Ryan Kelly from Blue Water, and Richard Burrows, Michael Finan, Kerry Penkey from Langin Engineering. As you know, we've been through this process for a while. This is, I think, our third appearance before the planning board. We have already received the negative declaration with the determination by the lead agency that this project will not have a significant adverse impact upon the environment. As you also know, the economic development special permit has been issued. And with that, what we would like to do is, I'll turn it over to Richard Burrows, our consulting engineer, who can refresh your recollection briefly, and then perhaps we can open up whatever discussion you may want to have. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, everyone. Richard Burrow, Langin Engineering. Worked last year toward the end of August, preparing the table for the meeting. So let me just walk you through where we are. Much of this will be the same, so I'm going to talk about the changes that we've accommodated since our last year. We've been granted a negative declaration. By the time we worked building on the project with professionals to obtain that negative declaration. So I'll walk you through, remind you about the project, and just walk you through the changes that we've implemented for your review here tonight. So it's the same 540,000 square foot warehouse building on the abandoned Sports Dome site. The difference is, let me just go kind of clockwise, starting from the north Route 52. When we were last here, we had started to consider changes to the berming along 52 to save more of the existing trees. And we completed that design, and the landscape berm is pulled back from 52 in certain locations while maintaining the same overall height. And so we're preserving more of the mature trees that are there today. As we go around in a clockwise direction, the next thing I'll cover is the sidewalks. So we last presented the project, we didn't have sidewalk connectivity from the project to the outside world, so to speak. We now do. The roundabout, that's almost finished construction on 52, has sidewalks. So we're running a sidewalk from our project to 52 to the north. And then if you recall, as part of the Amazon project, we built a bus stop. That bus stops, they're just off the page here, I can refer, actually, let me refer to this site plan exhibit. So this here is the bus stop, the bus stop's the concrete pavement. So it's really close, we're extending a sidewalk from the bus stop to the south, along the west side of Patriot Way. Then there's a connection to the north, sorry, southeast corner of the building, which is the primary office entrance. So that's another improvement. We had talked about some sound mitigation, and we finalized the sound wall of the northeast corner of the building, which will help mitigate the noise from this northern truck court. On the theme of noise, we've also implemented a significant berm along Patriot Way. And I'll provide another exhibit that covers that in a second. As we go around here, we've changed the configuration of the entrance to the northern truck court, slightly moving the garshack. We've changed the configuration of the parking lot slightly, but again, not significantly, looks very similar to before. One change we made was, we used to have two driveways coming into the site in the southeast corner, that's been consolidated into one. The reason for that is to provide an improved distance between the turn into the school drop-off and the turn into the site. So the distances that are provided are significantly beyond those required by ASHTO, which would be the governing body that governs site distances for stopping and such. And we've improved landscaping berm, so the view of the project from the school bus stop drop-off is better. So we have a landscape berm between our driveway and Patriot Way. So all, and then because of these changes in the driveway here, we moved the water tank from the southeast corner to the southwest corner. So not particularly significant, obviously still on the backside of the building, but it is a change that we wanted to recognize. It's overall a very similar project, but we've taken these steps to improve it and get us through the negative declaration stage of seeker before coming back to the board tonight. If you want me to keep going, I can go on and describe the berm more fully, or if you have any questions, I can take them now. Keep going, okay. So the berm is a pretty significant component of the project now. So the berm started off in blue, and then is in orange or yellow. So you can see it goes the entire length of Patriot Way from the school drop-off to the southern end of the baseball field. The berm starts off as a 10-foot berm. You can see there's slightly more space here, allows us to make the berm slightly taller. It then reduces slightly to between eight and 10 feet tall. And so still a significant berm, and these are the berm heights from Patriot Way, which is the high side. I mean, you guys are probably familiar with how the ball fields are lower. So from the high side, it's still eight to 10 feet tall. Then as we get around the bus stop, obviously the space we have is smaller, so it reduces to a six-foot berm. And then once we're past the bus stop, we increase back to a six-to-eight-foot tall berm and the full length of the baseball field. And this has been reviewed by a third-party consultant that the town hired, and meets the concerns that were raised about noise disturbance on the ball fields, or mitigates those concerns. So you can see it's a pretty comprehensive solution. In terms of how this berm will be landscaped, there's 250 plantings along Patriot Way that have been recently installed as part of Project Redtail. That was an extensive landscape program that was installed as part of a proposed visual barrier. Obviously with the berm, that's both a visual barrier and a noise barrier, so we'll replant those plantings. And then we've added another 32 plantings, so there's a total of 280 plantings that will be configured along the berm. So in my opinion, still provides a nice landscape berm and not just a big chunk of green grass. In terms of some other things, we do have a couple of signs, monument signs as part of the project. So, two monument signs, one is off of 52. So we have our car driveway and entrance to what used to be South Avenue, north. Off of 52, we have a monument sign there. And then we have another monument sign next to the reconfigured driveway off of Patriot Way. And these are pretty typical monument signs. This is the same detail that was in the package originally submitted to the town. I just thought it was important to just really highlight it and provide more detail just now. So it's 15 feet long, eight feet tall, and will identify the building's address and the tenants or tenant, depending on what the final occupancy is. And so one's up here off of 52, the other one off of Patriot Way. So fairly straightforward there. You can see on this other plan rendering, you know, other aspects of the landscape design. And we do have two walls configured on this northeast corner. There's a modular block retaining wall, which is between zero and five feet tall. Then there's an extensive landscape program of trees. And then behind that, there's the sound wall. And so this is what the sound wall will look like, but it really won't look like this because we'll have the landscaping in front of it. But where you can see the bare sound wall, that's what it'd look like. So it just blends in to the project, not particularly standing out. If you recall, the building is also gray in tone.
Is that finish on both sides of the wall?
Yes.
Or just the outward? Okay.
Both sides.
What's the height of that wall, Richard?
I believe it's eight feet. So you can see, you know, we have, this whole landscape program has been improved significantly between Patriot Way and the site driveway. So we have a new berm here. And then we have this five-foot wall with the sound wall on top of it with a layer of landscaping in between the two walls. So I think it's worked out well. I think, you know, we've had a lot, like I mentioned, between August and now, we've had a lot of interaction with the town professionals. And this is the project that we're seeking approval for.
So how many feet of that sound wall are going to exist? And can you show me where it start, begins and where it ends?
Yeah, absolutely. So the sound wall starts right here. So that's just off the garshack, and it ends right here. So essentially, it's covering the same dimension of the truck court and the garshack area, which is a source of more noise. And to answer your question on length, truck court's 180 feet, so it is probably 200 by the time you take into account the curvature of the wall.
And then, Richard, can you explain how beyond the sound wall, there's still a berm along the frontage there, this lower berm?
Yeah, so this whole area is a series of undulating berms. And there's a, as we come, you know, looking in from Patriot Way from 52, you go look across the detention point, and this is a berm, this is a berm. The berm changes a little bit here, and there's, but there's a continuous berm all the way around until you get to the wall, which picks up the bottom of the berm.
So the concern for the noise on that end is because of the school?
Correct.
What material is the wall made of?
It's a concrete panel.
Just to change gears a little bit, the
Sure, absolutely.
entrance and exit at the top left there, that's still a right-in, right-out only, out on the 52?
Yeah, since our last meeting here, we had a meeting with DOT about that. And, you know, obviously there's the signal that isn't a signal at Rothel Drive that's bagged off, so that's going to be removed as part of this project. The town's indicated their support from that. And with that being removed, then the DOT has indicated, as long as we're all aligned on this, which we are, then this right-in, right-out is appropriate. You can see, obviously, our intent's not to bring in, you know, a whole ton of traffic here. There's not going to be much truck traffic anticipated on 52. Most of the truck traffic is expected to come up Limekill Road and then make that immediate left on Patriot Way.
Now, quick question on the street light, because
Sure.
the public was pretty adamant that they wanted that light active. You're actually, the state's going to remove that light now?
So our traffic engineer's here tonight, and there's a couple of things I can summarize, but I think she should probably present. But yes, we are, I mean, the light is present but not active right now. And what we had, you know, the configuration of that light, that light was part of the Sports Dome project. Sports Dome project, obviously, is not here anymore. And a lot of other things have changed, most importantly, the implementation of the roundabout. And I think the town professionals agrees with this. People on Rothel Drive had expressed concern about making this left. In particular, the roundabout actually provides breaks in the traffic, similar to a traffic light, because as people make maneuvers, obviously they cut each other off, the person on the rotary having priority. So that will help this. The other thing is, for these people to make a left or go north in Rothel and around to here, they have another opportunity to do it on the other side of the rotary. So we heard their concerns, but our traffic analysis shows that it should work for them. It will work better than it worked before. The roundabout and the project was implemented, and it's a very different condition from the Sports Dome.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? How about our professionals, questions or comments?
We have several comments. I won't get into every one of them, most of them are plan-related, but some are administrative. The current plans that were submitted, they now show the site being served by water via a, what appears to be a new water main installed along the westerly shoulder of Patriot Way from south of the property, running almost to the roundabout or traffic circle, what do we call that?
Roundabout.
Roundabout.
Modern roundabout.
Modern roundabout.
And it's going to be fed from the southeast corner of the site to feed the water tank. So we have some questions about that, like who's supplying the water? You know, is it going to be Global Foundries? Is it the town? Is it Dutchess County Water and Wastewater? And when is that line anticipated on being installed? Because without that line going in, you can't serve the project with water. Sewer is, appears to be resolved. And it's water is the big question that I had on this recent submission.
Sure, so the water is going to be extended as, I mean, just to bring people back up to speed. What happened is, there's a water main that comes in along West Drive, crosses under the power lines, and services this whole site, the west campus. And that's the same water main that services Project Redtail, the Amazon project today. That water main will be extended to the Hudson Valley Logistics Center project. The town is suggesting that there's a new special water district be established for that main, which would service both the projects when the districts involve complete, that's the intent. So we're going to do the work there. The town will eventually own and maintain the main, and we will pay them the water fees.
Okay, do you have any anticipated timeline on when those districts will be formed? I know it's something that's outside of your control, but
It's outside of my control, maybe John wants to talk to it. It's definitely underway. I mean, we're providing map plan reports and such to the town.
Yeah, John Decole with Blue Water. This actually, this is an issue where we're actually following the lead of the town. So we, as part of Redtail, Project Redtail, as Richard just said, we are tied into a line that is sourced through Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And that's what we plan to do here for this project. But actually, with the town engineer, Scott Bryant, and then with other leadership within the town, they asked us if we'd be willing to allow them to actually form a special district that would allow potentially for the town to participate or have that line connect up with in the future with Route 52. And we're basically not opposed to it, and we're following the lead. So that is, I believe, on the agenda for next Thursday with the town board to form the special district. And Michelle, you're
Yes, that is correct, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be a municipal town special district, yeah. And that was based upon a recommendation and review with the town board, with town council. And that was the path that everyone said that's the way to go. So that's what we're doing.
Okay, so in order to, you know, to respond to that question, I would just suggest that a short letter to the board, for the records, that this is how we intend to serve the project with water, just so they have something for the files so they can make a determination. Yeah. Yeah. We're following the direction of the town. So the town wants to, this is how we want it to work. I'm confident you're not going to just plow in a new water line yourselves and hook up. So as long as the town's aware that you're doing it, I'm fine.
The town's aware.
Town's aware.
Yep.
Administrative items regarding a stormwater management district? You may want to get the wheels in motion for that. That also dovetails into the SWIP. And a number of individual site plan related comments. I won't bog things down by getting into those deeply. Regarding the stormwater pollution prevention plan, I know that the new berm alongside the high school, I know that's a fairly recent add. So we would just need to have that included in the SWIP. The current SWIP that we provided does not include that. So just certainly to include that. And also regarding the berm, obviously, we know that you're doing it in conjunction with the school. Something, a letter from the school district acknowledging
We, I think we've handled that already. That, I'm sorry, Christian, because all this happened so quickly. You may not have been as up to date as we are, but
I had the weekend off.
We are, we've handled the berm at this point, and we've agreed to the extent of the berm and the landscaping on the berm, and we're all set. That was part of the negotiation to extend it down past the baseball field.
Okay, and that would take care of access and maintenance and everything related to that? Okay. And, you know, the rest of the comments are all administrative or procedural, nothing really, no real showstoppers. We do have concerns still about the existing water lines that traverse the property. There's still quite a bit of fill on top of that. I don't know if Scott Bryant has had any additional communication with the owner of that line regarding, you know, that item.
I think we've also, we talked that through with town council this afternoon as well. We have an obligation, it's part of an existing easement with Global Founders. And so we have an obligation to make sure that that line is tenured to in terms of its providing overburden. And so that's exactly
As long as the town engineer's office and council, if they're amenable to the disposition of that item, then we would have no additional comment on it.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we have an obligation regardless. And we're asked to provide full information for that. We're looking at it right now and doing investigations to be said that it needs to be re-located for sound engineering design reasons, and that's a little bit
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Brendan?
I think as Rich alluded to, I think the, you know, the biggest outstanding thing from a traffic perspective is actually to get some approval from the DOT for the reconfiguration of South Drive or the modification of it to this proposed driveway configuration. They'd have a meeting with the DOT, which I participated in. You know, the request from them was to, for the consultant to perform signal warrant analysis, which they did, which, you know, the signal's been out of use for more than a decade. It is, you know, I know we've referred to it before as being able to turn the signal off and on again, but, you know, it really is a functionally obsolete signal at this point in time. So, you know, if to turn it back on, you would need to demonstrate that it actually meant warrants for a signal. It doesn't, I know there were some concerns about that. I think, you know, Richard covered that in terms of there's going to be the same opportunities or maybe some slightly improved opportunities for people to come out in the unsignalized condition. The roundabout will allow people, if they so choose, to make a right-hand turn out of Lake Drive and be able to do a U-turn at the roundabout and head eastbound. So that's certainly a benefit. Or, you know, if they're making a left to, you know, head to the 84 corridor, this actually gives them another path by taking a right-hand turn to be able to do that out of Lake Drive. And when you look at Lake City, you know, the majority of the homes that are there are sort of concentrated in that northeast quadrant. You know, probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the houses are sort of feed out Lake Drive, not Rothel. It's sort of a secondary way that they have out. But we will need DOT to, you know, they didn't pose any strenuous objection to what was being proposed, but we still need to get concurrence from them that the driveway, as it's shown and configured, is going to be okay. I think the only other sort of minor outstanding comment that I have is, you know, we, again, we're making every effort to direct trucks away from 52 onto Patriot Way and out to 84. The one, the northwest corner of the Truck Circulation Road, I know there were signs added to indicate that all trucks need to turn left at that sort of junction point. My only comment would be that the turning radius on that, on that inside corner is large. It's, I think, 60-foot radius. So it's probably suitable for a tractor trailer to go around, which doesn't need to be that, certainly for passenger cars or smaller, you know, FedEx trucks or whatever that might need to get in that area or in and out of that area. So we might look to want to tighten that up a little bit just so that it's more indicative for trucks to be taking that left and going back out to Patriot Way and not just have to rely on the signage. And I did look at the truck circulation plans, that particular maneuver, you know, wasn't needed to accommodate the fire apparatus and circulation around the building. Other than that, I think, you know, as Rich alluded to, we had lots of meetings and calls and conferences to sort of resolve a lot of things. And I think they made adjustments to the plan, you know, the biggest one from a traffic perspective, getting down to that one entrance and locating that as far away as we could from the drop-off that's under construction soon to be opened.
Brendan, what's the impact to the, if we're going to be routing people along Lake Drive there, what's the impact to traffic there? Because I know those people were sensitive to that, which is why we got the monstrosity of a gas station in and out over there, because they didn't want people pulling out onto Lake Drive and making a turn from there.
Pulling out from the gas station?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, the question is, how much more traffic is going to get routed through Lake City there? And what kind of
Yeah, no, it doesn't necessarily change the patterns of Lake City at all.
Yeah, you said that they're going to be able to go that way and come out that way.
It provides another opportunity. And, you know, Lake Drive is where the majority of the traffic comes out. You know, unless you're traveling westbound on 52. So it doesn't necessarily have any impact on the distribution of traffic in Lake City. It just, it does, it does give, it does afford the people that live on the Rothel end another opportunity to come up to Lake Drive and make a right-hand turn if that's, if that's, you know, an easier maneuver for them to be able to get out into the traffic stream on 52.
Thank you, Brendan. Michelle, anything else?
I don't think so.
From the town? Okay. At this point, I'll open it up to the public. If there are any members of the public who are here to speak for or against the project, you may come forward. I don't see any, so with that, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything further, Mr. O'Rourke?
Yes, respectfully, obviously, we've been here three times, and we know that there's been a draft resolution that's been circulated, which I think incorporates all of the comments and thoughts that we have. And we're hoping that this evening, someone would make a motion to introduce that resolution and second and adopt it, so that we can move forward.
That's the very next thing we're going to do for you.
Thank you.
You bet. So for the rest of the board's information, the town board has already passed a neg deck. And we now have a resolution before us that I will go ahead and read. And I'm going to try to summarize parts of it, but it's still going to be rather lengthy, so settle in for a few minutes. This is a resolution of final subdivision and site plan approval. Name of site plan, Hudson Valley Logistics Center. Name of applicant, C.A.N.A.M. Hudson Valley Logistics Owner, LLC. Location, 500 South Drive. Grid numbers, 6356-04-587105 and P/06356-04-606028. Whereas applications for approval of an economic redevelopment special permit, subdivision and site plan were submitted to the town board of the Town of East Fishkill by property owner for construction of a warehouse distribution center containing a total of approximately 540,688 square feet of floor area, including 20,000 540,688 square feet of floor area, including 20,000 square feet of office floor area, 124 loading docks, 145 trailer parking spaces and 324 car parking spaces, as well as stormwater management facilities, fencing, landscaping, site lighting, signage and other utility infrastructure. On property located at 500 South Drive, consisting of approximately 33.73 acres in the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District designated as tax parcels, as referred to earlier in my preamble. Whereas on June 23rd, 2022, the town board referred the application to the town of East Fishkill Planning Board and authorized the circulation of its notice of intent to declare lead agency pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the project is a type one action. And on June 24th, 2022, notice of intent to declare lead agency pursuant to secret was circulated to all known, involved and interested agencies. Whereas on July 28th, 2022, the town board declared itself lead agency pursuant to secret. Whereas on August 9th, 2022, the application was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to general municipal law. Whereas the planning board referred the application to the Town Architectural Review Committee and received a positive recommendation. Whereas on September 22nd, 2022, the town board and planning board opened a duly noticed joint public hearing on the pending application, at which time all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard. Whereas on September 22nd, 2022, the town board closed the public hearing on the special permit application and the planning board continued the public hearing on the applications under its jurisdiction to October 11th, 2022, which hearing was further adjourned to November 10th, 2022 and December 5th, 2022. And whereas the public hearing was closed on December 5th, 2022, after all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard. Whereas on November 17th, 2022, the town board as lead agency pursuant to secret adopted a negative declaration of environmental significance, finding the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and approve the economic redevelopment special permit. Whereas the application includes a request for a land excavation and filling special permit pursuant to section 194-75 of the town code. Whereas the town and its consultants have requested revisions in keeping with the town site plan special permit and subdivision review standards set forth in the town code. Whereas the town and its consultants have issued their respective comments, which have been or will be addressed by the applicant to the town's satisfaction. Whereas the planning board has considered the application with respect to all relevant provisions of the town code, including chapter 163, sections 194-75 and 194-44 and chapter 194, article seven of the town code. Whereas the planning board is fully familiar with the project and has reviewed the project relative to all applicable provisions of the town code. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grants preliminary subdivision plat approval to allow realignment of the lot lines shown on the subdivision plat prepared for Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures LLC. I'm going to continue to read, prepared by Chasing Companies, McKipsy, New York, filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office on June 25th, 2015 as FM number 11240A to transfer 7.63 acres of proposed Lot 2, either in fee title or by easement, as shown on said plan, to proposed Lot 1, as shown on said plan. With such realignment to occur as shown on plans entitled Site Plan and Subdivision Documents, Hudson Valley Logistics Center, prepared by Langham Engineering, Environmental Surveying, Landscape Architecture and Geology, DPC, White Plains, New York, last revised November 30th, 2022, which plan set consists of 26 pages. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby finds that the final subdivision plat will not be substantively as changed from the preliminary subdivision plat and hereby determines that a public hearing on the final plat is not required. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants final subdivision plat approval, as shown on the plans referenced above, and the planning board chairman is authorized to sign the final subdivision plat subject to satisfaction with the conditions set forth below. At present, the 7.63 acre area is proposed to be subject to an easement agreement in favor of C A N A M Hudson Valley Logistics Owner LLC, but may be conveyed in fee to same owner in the future. If and when the fee title to the 7.63 acre area is transferred, the applicant shall submit for signature the final subdivision plat, which shall be recorded in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby finds that the project is satisfied all political standards required for the issuance of a land excavation and filling special permit. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants final site plan approval as shown in the plans. And subject to the following conditions. A, prior to the signing of the final subdivision plat by the planning board chairman, the following conditions shall be satisfied. One, endorsement of Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. B, prior to the signing of the final site plan by the planning board chairman, the following conditions shall be satisfied. Number one, the applicant shall address any outstanding comments in the following review memorandum from the town staff and professional consultants and affirmatively finds that any comments not listed below have been satisfactorily addressed by the applicant. A, Hudson Valley Engineering Associates review letters dated October 21st, 2022 and December 5th, 2022. And B, CPL review letter dated December 5th, 2022, except condition number six, perends on page three, 34A, perends on page six and 34B on page six. Conceptual approval from the New York State DOT for modifications and improvements within the Route 52 right-of-way. Number three, approval of water and sewer connections from Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Number four, the applicant shall execute a stormwater management facility maintenance agreement and agreement for the private stormwater controls on the project site acceptable to the town engineer and town attorney. The easement shall be recorded by the applicant at its sole expense in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk. Number five, payment to the town of all outstanding escrow fees for professional consultant review of the project and all other fees. C, general conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall establish all required escrows for construction inspections and remodeling. The escrow shall be replenished upon notice to the applicant by the town. Any remaining escrow funds shall be returned to the applicant upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the fulfillment center. The applicant shall implement and maintain all mitigation measures and other commitments set forth in the negative declaration pursuant to secret dated November 17th, 2022. All construction to occur Monday through Saturday, including holidays and special John Jay High School events, such as graduation between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, unless otherwise authorized by the town. Thirty, thirty days prior, written notice shall be given to the applicant for any special John Jay High School event. The number for special John Jay High School event shall not exceed four per school year. Number four, compliance with all requirements of the town board's economic redevelopment special permit approval resolution. Number five, a berm shall be constructed by the applicant on the east side of Patriot Way, formerly Auditorium Drive, near the area of the John Jay High School football field generally extending from the southern end of the John Jay drop-off to, to the southern end of the John Jay baseball field adjacent, as shown on the plan entitled Patriot Way Berm and, and Sections. Number six, in the event Patriot Way is accepted by the town prior to the conclusion of the 2022-2023 winter season, the applicant shall nonetheless be responsible for maintaining the roadway for 2022-2023 winter season as per a winter maintenance agreement between the applicant and the town. Be it further resolved that this conditional approval of the final subdivision plat shall expire 180 days from the date of the adoption of this resolution unless all conditions set forth above have been certified as completed and the final plat has been submitted for endorsement by the planning board chairman or unless a written request for an extension of final subdivision plat approval is granted by the planning board. The planning board may grant 90-day extensions to said time period. Be it further resolved that once the final subdivision plat has been endorsed by the planning board chairman, said plat must be filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office within 62 days. After said filing, two copies of the final subdivision plat shall be submitted to the town. Be it further resolved that all subsequent owners, unless ease of the project and the project site, shall be required to comply with the terms and conditions of approval of the resolution. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All, we will do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Board member Craig Arco.
Aye.
Board member Ed Miachi.
Aye.
Board member Sarah Blitso.
Aye.
Board member Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Board member Donald Pepe.
Aye.
And Chairperson John Eichman. I'm an aye. It carries.
May we get you a glass of water? Thank you very, very much and thank you for your cooperation. And I think it'll be a delight to many of the residents to see instead of a massive concrete out there, you're going to see a landscape berm and you're going to see a brand-new building and, and as you all know, a good tax rateable for the town of East Fishkill. So happy holidays to all of you and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you as well.
Thank you very much, Harold.